All right, I'm calling to order the meeting of the Newburyport School Committee for December 21st. And Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Hawkeizer.
Here.
Mayor Holliday.
Present.
Mr. Menon.
Here.
Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Mr. Ridden.
Here.
And Mr. Cole is absent.
Yes.
And Ms. Balding.
Here.
All present but Steve Cole.
And we have a quorum. We please stand and look at Wilbur Duck's screen for the flag, please. And let's say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Mr. Menon to manage public comment now.
Mr. Callahan is the Zoom master for public comment. And he's muted. Brian, you're muted.
Wilbur Duck.
Brian, can you unmute? Yeah, Brian, you're muted, buddy.
I got it. I got it. I'm having tons of internet issues here, too. Okay, Sierra Leahy, if you would like to speak, I'm going to allow you to talk.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I think that I'm actually supposed, I'm the student representative for Newburyport.
All right, I'm going to put you as a panelist then.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that. Um. I don't see any hands for public comment, though there are 12 people here. So does anybody wish to speak for public comment? I see no hands.
Great, so we will close public comment. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have warrants. I would ask the superintendent to read the warrants for us and then take a motion in a second.
Right. Moved at the following bills, the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate of $312,594.83 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment, and there are no conflicts.
Second.
I will make that motion, since superintendent can't.
Oh, true, yes.
Oh, wait, let me change that.
He does do a good steve, though, doesn't he? Yeah, he's really good. I thought it was very good.
Yeah, he's learned from all these years.
So, Mrs. Kennedy, I made the motion, and Mayor Holliday said.
I have that, thank you.
Good, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Aye.
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 Opposed? Passes unanimously.
All right.
So I will make the following motion, and Sean will fill in the blanks.
All right. The named bills and payrolls of Newburyport Public Schools amount in the aggregate of $1,186.61 to be approved for the city auditor to make payment and deduct the funds from the school's account, and there are no conflicts.
Second.
Read and second that discussion? I made the motion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I know. No problem. It's a little confusing. Any, any discussion?
I'm old.
Hearing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. I'm going to make one more motion here.
All right, the following named bills, the Newburyport Public Schools amount in the aggregate of $1,765.71 to be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mayor Holliday seconds that discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Sean, I'll give it to you or Brian to introduce Sierra, our student representative.
All right.
She's now panel, so she can begin speaking whenever she's ready.
All right.
She has as much power as everybody on the panel now.
Okay, hi, everyone.
Just don't cancel school.
Um, so a few updates. The Cornell Lab of Ornithology at Cornell University has recognized Nicholas Forstall for his photo contribution to the regional bird ID guides. They note that his submission to help improve the understanding and appreciation of birds as people enjoy the photos and read about the birds, and at the end I can show you, or hopefully I can share my screen to show you two pictures that the lab used. Last Tuesday was our first dialogue using the text "Just Mercy." While sharing reactions to the text, students learned skills of constructive dialogue. Our next scheduled dialogue will happen the first week of January. Last week, the class advisors organized a spirit week for the entire school. Grade levels competed in three areas: a virtual scavenger hunt, a toiletry drive, and a music video. I'm happy to say the seniors won, but all the classes demonstrated a strong showing. It was nice to have the week as a distraction from the regular routine. Knowing that the kupla was recently refurbished, I want to share a portion of the senior video that uses a drone to capture images of the building that you may appreciate. So let me just go back here and hopefully I can share my screen. Oh, I cannot, but I can send you guys.
Sierra, if you hold on one second.
I can allow you to share your screen.
Oh, you can? Oh, wonderful.
There you go. You should be all set.
Okay. Um. Let's see. Can you guys see the screen or no?
Not yet.
Okay, one sec. Let me try this one more time. Okay, can you see it now?
Yep.
Yes.
So this is the picture of one of the birds. This other picture of the other bird. And then, hopefully, tell me if you guys can hear the sound. Oh. Sorry about this. I thought it was all set. I can just send the link to.
That would be great.
Joanne, and then you guys can all see it. Is that what I don't think?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sierra, the ornithology lab at Cornell is quite an extraordinary lab, and they actually have they have bird cams, you know, where they have them like up in owls' nests and peregrine falcons' nests, and you can tune in anytime and see what they're doing. It's really a great place. Thank you. I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Gallagher, who will introduce Mr. Wolf.
Great. And then, Mr. Wolf, you can follow up, because I know you want to, I mean, the video that the kids made was pretty awesome. So you can explain that, and for the viewers that are watching on TV right now, we can maybe upload that video so everybody can see it. The kids did a great job for Spirit Week and using a drone to really go up, you know, in the kuplar, and it's pretty cool. But at this time, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Wolf on Galapagos Island Overnight Field Trip that I believe we would like to postpone to the following year, because obviously of the COVID cases. But, Mr. Wolf, why don't you jump right in?
Thanks, Mr. Gallagher. So this is the, the Galapagos trip is a trip that had been canceled last spring. It was supposed to run last April, but it got to a point where the company wound up canceling the trip. And so now, we still have a lot of students who are here, and we're still trying, just like we did with the the Australia trip, trying to do the best we can to help out the families that have invested a significant amount of money in these trips. So we are able to reschedule the trip to the Galapagos to happen in April of 2022. And we do have 15 current sophomores who are here that will be able to use their vouchers that EF provided them so that they can just transfer it over and then not lose any money that they had initially put in. We also have an additional five or six students who are siblings to other students who obviously will no longer be students when the trip runs, so they could also transfer their vouchers to their younger siblings that are either freshmen or sophomores right now. And so what I'm looking for is that we're able to move that trip and schedule it with EF for April of 2022.
Good, why don't we have a motion, second, and then we can have discussion?
Motion to approve the trip for, this is April of '22, you said?
Yes.
Second, great, Mr. Ridden. Good discussion. Does anybody have questions for Mr. Wolf?
I think it's awesome the kids are going to get to go. I think it's awesome that some of them had siblings who are going to get to go. So it's great. Thanks for putting all that together.
Thanks, Andy.
No problem. Ms. Hobbs has done a lot of great work, that's for sure.
Mayor Holliday.
Just a question for you, Mr. Wolf. So what happens if you have someone who purchased the trip and they don't have a sibling to transfer the voucher to?
So they, they lost, I believe it was the $1,000. They could also have a voucher which could be used when they are in college. So for some of the seniors who were supposed to go on the trip last year and don't have a sibling, so they can use their voucher for a college trip through EF. Or, in some cases, families just ate the $1,000. That was lost.
Thank you.
We may be keep in mind, as we start to approve trips, if kids like had these vouchers, like how long are the vouchers good for?
I believe they're good up for two years.
Okay, so I'm saying maybe if we approve some trips in the, for next year, we could, we could try to matchmake?
Oh, that's, that's a good idea. I would agree.
Oh, yeah, good idea. This is the, this is the longest field trip I've ever had to deal with on the school committee, like three years. Any further discussion? All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Anytime.
Is it, what are you going to tell us about the, are you going to tell us something about the video that we're going to be, get a link to?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, so last week, the student, the class advisors had put together a spirit week. We weren't able to run our color day as we typically would, but we definitely wanted to break up just the monotony of our current schedule and routine. And so each of the grade levels was able to produce, was able to create their own music video. But then the seniors, because I believe one of their classmates has access to a drone, and then in their video, they just made some unbelievable footage, especially of the high school. And the imagery around the kupla was just pretty impressive. So we'll make sure, we'll try to edit it for you, because it's, it's done through our Action News segment, so, which is a full 15 minutes, but we can try to, we'll have Ms. Williams edit that for us so that we can give you the stuff that's most pertinent there. But the seniors definitely did a nice job with their video.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
I'm going to turn this over in a second to the superintendent to introduce the medical advisory folks for discussion. And I did just want to point out that we have been monitoring the COVID situation on a weekly basis, as we said we would. We've been providing information on the progress of COVID in the district. And we have asked the medical advisory team to come in now and give us their flavor of what's happening now and, and any concerns they might have about the future. It's listed as a possible vote, because there could be a possible vote, depending on what the will of the school committee is. Mr. Gallagher.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Menon. So we're fortunate to have our, some aspects of our medical advisory team. We have Mike Allard, Dr. Sue, Kathy Ricchio, but we also work with the Board of Health and, and other agencies on a weekly basis. Actually, since the since the school year began and we've had students in, in the schools, I cannot thank the medical advisory team enough, just because we've been meeting on a weekly basis. And, you know, Dr. Sue and Mike Allard, they also have other jobs that are very important, but they've been making time for us on a weekly basis in the school department. Typically, it's on Wednesday mornings for about an hour, and sometimes it goes on for two hours. It really helped us, as a school department, analyze the data, analyze the data trends, really work with the educators in having us make the, the best possible decisions that we can for our staff and our students. And I just can't thank them enough. So at our last school committee meeting, there was a question on the metrics, and then how the metrics have kind of changed. You know, three weeks ago, we were red, then the state changed the metrics, then we went to yellow. There was a lot of, I think, confusion around, you know, the metrics and how it's being utilized. So tonight, they were really coming in to speak about the metrics and, and how we've been utilizing that. At our last meeting, and Dr. Sue, Mike Allard, Kathy Ricchio, in the Board of Health, and obviously, we're all very familiar what's happening in the state and what's happening in Newburyport and the region. The cases in the last couple of weeks, within all of these communities, have really taken off, so to speak. So they're also going to give some of their insight on what they're seeing, what they expect after the break. And I felt this would be a good opportunity for them, not only to share with school committee, but also all of the viewers in our community that's, that's watching right now, just to give their perspective on the pandemic and the virus and, and all these bumps. We had the Thanksgiving Day bump, but this winter break bump could be worse in the next few weeks. So, and with that being said, I will turn it over to the medical advisory team, Dr. Sue and Ricchio, you have some information also. So did you want to speak first, Mr. Allard, or does it matter?
Jessica, it's up to you.
I, I don't mind going first. So can I share my screen quickly? I just wanted to show one quick thing.
You're all set.
Okay, thanks. So just in the last few minutes here, I decided I would look at, I wanted to, I wanted to show this in real time to give you guys an idea of what's happening. So can you see my little Excel spreadsheet here?
Yes.
So as you know, every week, the state has a weekly summary of data that summarizes the last week and, or two weeks in terms of the actual data, and, and they print it. And so they print two numbers that are of interest. Now, these are the numbers particularly from Newburyport, and I'll zoom in here so you can see them better, just from October 7th until now. And I want you to understand these numbers, because this is going to be important in sort of my view of how this is. So the test positive rate is something that we all are familiar with, in that this is just the tests in the area that are given, the number that are positive. And as you see here, October 7th, the number of positive tests was .46%. And, and this stayed, you know, relatively low, small creeping up, but then you see the first bump here right around Halloween time, you know, and it's up to the test positive rate. So out of 100 tests, about two were positive. Now, as Sean alluded to, Massachusetts changed their parameters for what they considered a red city or town. And actually, on November 5th, we were identified as red with the parameters you see here. A test positive rate of 2.23, 2.26%, and an incident rate of 15.3. Now, now, as you can see from, from Halloween, you just go a few, a few weeks more, and you really start seeing this, a notable increase here around November 19th, where we're now up into the 3% positive rate. And now we kick into Thanksgiving Week, and really, if you look at this, you know, in the last one, two, in the last six weeks, we've gone up two and a half times in the, in the test positive rate. So now we're at a point where, you know, the data from last week, five out of 100 people are testing, 5.5 out of 100 people are testing positive. So we can clearly see that trend, and if I, if I zoom out, oh, sorry. Here, here is sort of how it looked. And before that, this was, this was verging, you know, the lowest it can be is zero. So it was just slowly, slowly creeping up from September until this point. But now you see, this is a pretty notable increase. Now, simultaneous to that, we have something called the incidence rate. And I want us to understand what that is, because if you don't, you don't understand how important this is. And an incidence rate, it's not like a test positive rate. These are the number tested, and this is how many positive. It's the rate of change in the number of people who are becoming positive. So how much faster today, you know, are people becoming positive than they were a week ago? So when you see this incidence rate go from 2.8 out of 100,000, that's the rate of change in October, to 56.3, the rate at which people are getting this is higher by, you know, over a magnitude here, right? I mean, this is tremendously higher. It's 20, 20, 20 times higher. So when you've heard people say in the past that, you know, things just seem fine, and then all of a sudden it got out of control, I want us to understand, it's not just that the test positive rate is going up. It's the rate at which people are acquiring it is also going up. So that means it's getting faster and faster. So, so these two things together, I think we need to be aware of in terms of looking at the safety of our schools. I, I say this because, you know, as the test positive rate goes up, we have more and more cases within the schools. Now, you know, there's been a lot said to the fact that our schools haven't transmitted. The transmission rate to date, evidence is low that, you know, that there's transmission within the school. But as both of these things go up, and especially prevalence, like the amount of this disease in our community, many things get harder in the schools. And one of them is the idea of contact tracing. If you now have a case where there's a number of positive people in the school and enough positive people in the community, that you can't pinpoint how that person actually got the, the disease or got, got COVID, because they've been exposed multiple times in the, in the course of a couple of days. So they don't know, oh, was it in hockey, or was it in school, or was it when I went to, you know, downtown and ate outside? So when that happens, that is when this becomes a very, very difficult to manage, even in a school setting, because cases are coming, coming up. You don't know exactly how to contact trace with them, and it can get out of control. And this is particularly true for the, the admin at our school who are trying to identify cases and do the proper contact tracing, notify people to keep our school safe. So all of this is happening simultaneous to, right, starting on our winter break, where there's likely going to be people traveling to other, other places where, you know, this incidence rate and the test positive rate are higher than they are here, and they perhaps may not be adherent to the guidelines in Massachusetts. So, so given this sort of multifaceted number of things that we need to be considering in terms of just raw data for Newburyport, and what we know is likely to happen, because we've seen it happen both during Halloween and again at Thanksgiving, we need to be aware that likely the month of January, we will have the highest test positive rates ever, and the incidence rate is still going up. So while we've done a lot to be able to treat the disease, this and that, the amount of this raw disease in our community that's going to be in the school without, you know, with asymptomatic cases, is likely going to be higher than ever before. And this is going to put a tremendous burden on the staff who, who are trying to contact trace and keep our schools safe. So I want to, I wanted to bring up all these points, because I think these are the things we need to, to consider. And at one of our weekly meetings, Pam, who is one of the members of the Board of Health, had said, you know, perhaps there are times when we may want to consider closing for a short period of time, so we can remain open in a long period of time. And I do think having a perspective like that might be wise, that perhaps, especially as people are coming back, and there's a lot of influx of new disease into our town, it, it may be wise to, to be thinking about the best way to manage this in our school, so we don't get to the point where we're so overwhelmed that the staff can't handle it, and we really are in a precarious, precarious situation. So those are some of my thoughts. I think I'm done there. I stopped sharing.
So just jumping in after Dr. Sue. As I, as I think many of us know, it's not just Newburyport, our surrounding communities, which is something that we've been watching, have also gone into the, the red. And, you know, as a, as a county, Essex County, overall, throughout the Commonwealth has had the second highest rates of infections and deaths in the Commonwealth. And if we just even scope out a little bit further, to put an exclamation point on what we've all been reading about, the number of projected deaths were recently just adjusted. And unfortunately, it's been adjusted upwards from the University of Washington, in which by April 1st, and just for context, December 19th, it was 311,000 people dying overall. It will be 562,000 people by April 1 of 2021. And, and that number has its roots in all of the things that we're seeing throughout the United States, to include here in Massachusetts and even in our communities, in which the hearings by our local and state leaders are not being heard to the degree that they should be. And so to put that into perspective, that supersedes US fatalities from World War I and World War II combined. So to say that this is unprecedented in, in the last century, in many ways, is an understatement. So, so for us, I think the other, the other piece of learnings as we go along with this, and I think it was particularly true that in the spring, this disease had a, a very fatal effect on those who were much older. There's new evidence now coming out that, as we look at the data, that's not necessarily as, as much of the story, to include a, a recent publication from the incoming new director, Dr. Rochelle Walensky, colleague of Dr. Sue's, infectious disease at MGH, who's going to be the new director for the CDC, which are finding that young people ages 25 to 44 are dying at historic rates from, from this pandemic. And so it's definitely grim news, and from all predictions, as bad as Thanksgiving was, this time period between Christmas and New Year's is going to be even worse. And that those incident rates and those other testing rates will, as Jessica Sue said, climb even higher. So I, I do think, you know, as we've been discussing, and for my own recommendations, I think it is time that the school committee consider, for at least the first two weeks, that remote learning continue. Anything at this stage that we can do to flatten the curve of this has arrived. And, you know, I think we are, as I've talked about in some of our meetings, we're, we're in this funny period in which. we're, we're in this funny period in which, um, the vaccine is on our doorstep. There's a lot of hope, um, but with that hope can come some easing off a little bit. And, and this is not the time to do it. We know our hospitals in Massachusetts are filling up. In Eastern Massachusetts alone, they're at about eighty eight percent, uh, capacity rates between ICU and medicine floors. And that's before we even go into the holidays. So, you know, I think, um, as I, we talked about this and think about our own kids. And as many of you know, I have three children, high school in particular. You know, I've seen the value of having exposure in, in-person learning through my own kids. And so in making these recommendations, it, it comes at an acknowledgement that the, that the teachers, um, and the students have benefited greatly from, from this learning, uh, to be in person. But at the same time, um, we need to really acknowledge where we are, uh, in, in the, in the course of this pandemic and, and really consider if we should be able to try and mitigate it even for a short period of time before we go in. I think I'll end a little bit as I've, I've thought about some of our younger kids. And, um, when I think about, uh, first graders and, and how do you explain why, uh, if you decide to, to do this, we go into another remote learning situation? And what came to my mind, as I talked about it with my own kids, is the movie Cars. And so we know in the first movie, Disney's Cars, uh, Lightning McQueen in the beginning of the movie, uh, is racing around that track and he's got a, he's got a head start on everybody else. When he goes into the pit, he refuses the tires. And he, he decides that he doesn't want to pause for that much longer to be able to pull the racer. And I think in many ways, if we refuse the tires on this, we're going to end up in the situation where we're not winning the race. I think all of us want to be able to get through the next couple of months to be able to come out better on the other end of it. Thank you.
Anybody have questions, um, that they would like to ask Mike or Dr. Sue? Ryan Callahan.
First of all, thank you guys. I spoke to Dr. Sue earlier today by, as since the beginning of the stuff, I told her I trust her implicitly. I know nothing about science, uh, but I believe it. And I have no emotions when it comes to this, it's simply based on fact. So thanks for giving us the information. My main question is, um, possibly for superintendent. There was going to be a second series of testing that we were going to be allowed to have in the schools. That was better than the, the rules for the previous batch. So is that still coming down the pipe?
Oh, um, that's why I make sure I'm, you guys can hear me right. Well, that's what we're looking for the second half, um, of the school year. The surveillance testing is kind of what we're really investigating right now because we really feel the month of January and February, you know, right now, um, they have educators as the second phase of the vaccine. But for us, um, as a district, I think that if we could get the pool testing and the surveillance testing for staff, I think that would be very beneficial, uh, for us moving forward, you know, um, with this pandemic. And that's something Mayor Holiday and, you know, Kathy Ricchio, um, I've been working on Mayor Holiday. He's really been, I think, a champion with that because we know that if we can test our faculty on a regular basis, then, uh, there'd be a good chance that we can, uh, keep the schools open as, as long as we can.
Right. So is that second set? I, I, I remember we spoke of a while back that they were, we were waiting for the, the rules for the second set were different. They were less restrictive.
There's two tests is, and Kathy Rico can probably speak a little bit more on this. But the binex testing that the state, uh, offered for the first round, was testing when you're, the restrictions were if you're sick. So if people were sick, if a student was sick, they would get tested to see if they have the COVID virus. You know, that for us, I think, you know, add a lot of challenges because you don't, if someone's sick at home, we want them to stay home and not, they're sick at home, come into school to get a test. So, yeah, so we started to explore outside of the binex testing, uh, pool testing, which we could utilize that for surveillance, uh, for the staff on a regular basis.
Now, and Dr. Sue, Mr. Allard, so if we got that, well, is there a timeframe on that, Sean?
Um, I, we do have.
When it may become available.
We're looking, you know, Mayor Holiday's on, on the call. So we are looking to see, um, trying to get that as soon as we can.
Okay. So with that, if we had that test option, Dr. Sue, would that change anyway? What your recommendations are for, um, going remote if we have that available?
Well, let me, let me back up and say, so even Kathy and I were on the phone today to look into, into different options. And we're trying to arrange a few meetings coming up for potential options with testing. I, so I think the, the great thing about if you, if you did surveillance testing is it really gives you so much better of an idea of where we are. But one thing I, I will say is I, I think if we got that set up, you know, I, I've helped some colleges do this and even calculated the amount they need to test to see, to identify transmission, et cetera. But I, I think that the one thing we need to appreciate is that's not going to happen by January fourth. That turnaround is just too fast with, with the holidays. So, um, you know, once we got something up and running, um, that really does change, I think, the dynamic of, of the situation because we have more information. I, however, I would say for the near future, you know, if we, even if we signed up tomorrow to do this, we wouldn't be able to really get this going until, until sometime in the new year. So just being aware that there is a little bit of lag, even with the best labs. I mean, I'm talking like the bro, that they would have a lot of lag. It's just part of the process.
Okay. Um, okay. So having said, the last thing I'll say is, um, I don't know, and anybody can discuss this all night. I don't think this is really a school committee call. I think this is a superintendent call. And I've said it before, I'll say it again, we empowered Sean to make the call, how to have schools start and to do like the remote, uh, the remote this week. And anything else that we talked about, like, hey, if, if rates go over X where it closed, I don't believe that it's really a voting thing. I think it's superintendent's been given the authority, empowered with making the right choice based on the experts and their advice. So I don't think school committee should be voting at all on this tonight. I think, um, the superintendent should take it away with his staff, Kathy Ricchio and all the other experts and make the call themselves on behalf of the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Balding, and then Mayor Holiday as soon as Ms. Balding, I end up.
My question was also about testing. They pretty much answered it, but I do want to clarify that I heard Dr. Sue correctly that with the cases rising as they are, it's more difficult to do contact tracing. We can no longer pinpoint if staff is catching students and students from staff. We can't do that anymore. Is that correct?
So it really depends at what point in the process we're at. But, um, like you can imagine this way, like right now, Britain, right? Has this super virulent strain that's very contagious. If in one day, you know, there's a student and they, you know, go one or two or three places. And then a few days later find out at each of those places, there was a person who was infected and now they're infected. Where did they get it? So that type of thing can also happen in a setting where imagine one of those three places is school and the other is football and the other is soccer. But now, um, when you, when you realize that you've been exposed, potentially exposed, even if school's safe in all three places, because there's someone else in your classroom who tested positive, there's someone else on your team, then when you get to that level of prevalence, that's when all of contact tracing really becomes unmanageable. And you have to go into much more extreme things like the lockdowns. So that's what we don't want to do, if that makes sense.
It sounds, thank you.
Mayor Holiday.
I just wanted to add to this conversation. Uh, one of the obstacles to us was the fact that, you know, we kept pushing for the last probably four to six weeks for it, uh, information from our legislatures on a state and federal level, asking for them to allow us to extend the use of the CARES Act beyond December thirty first. This is expensive in terms of testing, but it's also important. And so, uh, we found out with the stimulus package that was passed last night that we will have until the end of this next calendar year to spend our COVID money, which is terrific because not only do we want to institute testing, but we have the remote academy to cover and the teachers there. And, you know, PPEs and other expenses, you know, as we start trying to organize the, uh, vaccination of first responders, which we're trying to do in early January. We have no help from the federal or state government and we need to have at least two hundred people who will be vaccinated and move forward in this whole protocol. So we're working on that at the same time as we're working with the schools. Cataldo, uh, has been, uh, Atlantic Ambulance, who is the provider in our city and has been for probably eight years at this point. They have set up testing in a variety of settings as well as colleges and schools. Today they tested both our police and fire, uh, as they have been doing on a regular basis. Uh, we have a, a call with them tomorrow and our, our goal is to try and get this set up. And, um, I think that they are a good provider, I believe. I'm, I know we've talked to so many people, it's the Broad Institute that they use, Sean, right? In Cambridge, is that for testing?
I think so, yes.
Yeah, that's the lab they use and they're very, um, positive about the results and how quickly the turnaround happens. So, um, we're working on this and we hope to get it in place. But, um, I'm really, really, really concerned about the numbers. And, uh, I think Dr. Sue's graph was, uh, graphs where, you know, it, we have those also posted on the city website. You know, to see that, you know, we were flat throughout the summer, did so well. And then all of a sudden everything is, our cases have doubled since October. Uh, we had two more deaths this past weekend. And, you know, for a while people were just chalking up to, oh, it's the clusters of the long-term care. That's not the case in terms of what we've been able to determine. Certainly there were clusters in, uh, long-term care facilities, you know, three, four weeks ago that we were, uh, working closely with, but that's not the case right now. So, um, I hear what, uh, Mr. Callahan is saying, that he believes this is really the call of the superintendent in terms of, um, working with, um, the health experts. But I can't agree more that we should be going to remote for the first two weeks in January just to get through this surge. We've seen the surge, we've seen the cases and all indications are it's going to be worse. And we have to get people to understand that just because the vaccine is here, it is going to take, what I'm hearing is seventy five percent of the population of the United States to get vaccinated before we are out of this. And so think about that, we're just, you know, in miniscule numbers in terms of vaccinating people. And the amount of dosage that will be coming, setting up, um, you know, being able to distribute the vaccine, it's going to be an incredible challenge, but we're working with Integx Hospital in order to do that, hopefully for the general public late spring. Hopefully teachers will be in February, you know, and as we move through, you know, the series of months. But, um, I think to, um, because we can't do the kind of contact tracing now because of numbers. We've hired three additional staff to help, nursing staff to help with contact tracing and they're absolutely swamped. And, um, they're not necessarily getting people to answer or give accurate information either. I think in order to stop a full lockdown in our city, which is, you know, not that far in the distant future if we don't get our numbers in, under control, that I strongly recommend that we support what the health professionals are telling us tonight to go for another two weeks just to be safe, uh, for the, you know, when they come back from the fourth to the next following two weeks into remote. And then, you know, look at our numbers because we get the, you know, we're have numbers coming in on a regular basis and, uh, report from the state every Thursday. So that's my, um, I, I support the health experts recommendation.
Are there other questions? I have some, but I want to make sure everybody else gets a chance to ask.
I think Sean has.
Well, I do, I do, I was trying to be technical. Let's see if I can get rid of that. Okay. Uh, yeah, I have a couple of questions. That would be great. First, I want to thank Dr. Sue and Mr. Allard, a lot of great information. I appreciate all your work with Sean. Can I ask you, uh, the group, just do you guys have more meetings on the books before January fourth? Sean, do you know?
Yeah, we, we usually check in, um, we've been checking in every week, uh, with the holiday weekend and depending on, on our vote, uh, or the direction we go, um, you know, we'll, we'll still meet, but it's probably going to be a little bit hotter over the, uh, the holidays. So we were planning on our next meeting would be the week of January fourth to review the data trends over the winter break.
Okay. So there's, there'll be no meeting between now and then.
Right, not this time.
Okay, um, the other thing I was going to ask was, I, I don't know if this is more the mayor, but do we worry that kind of sending this message? And again, I, I want to do, I mean, I absolutely trust the science. I trust Dr. Sue and Mr. Allard. I really appreciate their info. But do we worry about, and maybe this is a citywide question, do we worry about the kind of the message we're sending? You know, it seems like most of our jumps, you know, again, haven't been in school and data. It's been more with the remote, the remote population. Now we're going to put all our kids and kids coming home from college and whatnot. Is there more of a, I guess, Mayor, do you see a bigger strategy here as far as, you know, trying to get us back into school or kind of flattening this curve? Or is this kind of just unique to the schools right here?
Well, well, it's not unique, I mean, to us, it's happening everywhere. But I think we've been very fortunate to have Dr. Sue and Mike Allard and Kathy Ricchio working with us as well as our Board of Health and our, our, you know, staff in the Health Department. You know, that I see that we are well, you know, have done really, really well in terms of our hybrid model and having more in-person learning than most districts across the state. And, you know, we all agree that the best situation for students is in-person learning. But until we get through this or, you know, can do more testing and can have, you know, a system that's in place that gives us a level of confidence. We've got a lot of winter sports happening. We have a lot of activity happening over the holidays. And we saw the kinds of spikes that happened at Thanksgiving despite all the warnings. And I think that, um, to take the two weeks to set up, and we're still working on this and we will work through this during the holiday break, uh, on, um, setting up the testing. So hopefully we'll have something in place the week students come back. And, you know, our goal is to get our hybrid model back in place, uh, the way that we currently are running and operating the schools.
Sean, just a question for you. So do you envision winter sports still being able to practice during this time?
I think right now, uh, in looking at, you know, the other districts that are closing for that, um, time period, they are, they are continuing with the, um, winter sports. Because it's the ones that are being monitored within the school system are very strict in the sense of all the protocols and healthy, uh, health and safety protocols versus the ones that are being run, um, you know, by the park and, you know, uh, or different recreational programs, so.
Super Dylan Gallagher, how is that being justified? If the kids are just masked and doing what they're supposed to do and they're doing the same thing in the building, those same kids that are now, we're saying they could see three different groups and they don't know where they got exposed. It, it, it doesn't make sense to let one group of kids be all together and the other kids not.
I, I think for, when you're looking at like the practice, I mean, right now, we're, everything is still up in the air. So there, there isn't a lot of, uh, decisions until we, we figure out what we're going to be doing after tonight. But with the sporting teams, um, you know, that's something obviously we'll have to take a look at. But I know, uh, in other districts, because the practices aren't as long, they're not doing like three, four hour practices and, and that they're, uh, it's a shorter time with kids are together. But that's something that we can definitely take a look at, absolutely.
Mr. Hochheiser, do you have any questions? Uh, you might want to unmute yourself.
Yeah, sorry about that. I was going to bring up sports. I mean, I don't want to make it even worse sounding for people who, obviously, I mean, I, I get the benefit of them, but it does seem awkward is the word I guess I'll use, that we're going to be okay with sports practices, but not classes. You know, the rhetoric that I keep hearing is, you know, should schools be first, not last on the list of things to stay open? But, you know, I, I don't want to kill the economy and say we should close the restaurants or, or whatever else it is going down, like, you know, you drive through downtown on Saturday, it was packed. And I think I was happy it was packed downtown. I know there are good things to be happy about that, but also like, you know, from a pandemic's perspective, it feels awkward that we're going to be closing and everything else is going to be open. I, I guess my question is, you know, we're talking about two weeks. And to Dr. Sue's point, I'm wondering if, if two weeks is enough? Like, are we going to be back here in January 4th or what would that be the, the 18th? Then saying, now we need another two weeks. And I'm thinking about the teachers and whether or not they need time to plan and be kind of on a solid footing or even families. You know, I, I think there's a personal, I'm assuming that people are nervous about having to try to plan for two weeks at a stretch. Especially since some of the emails we got today are all about like, how am I supposed to work my job? If I can't guarantee I can be there? So, and I don't know if it's testing or certainly it's not the vaccine we're waiting for the next two weeks. So that's all, it's just something to think about or just a question I have. And then I always have the question, like, if we're going to come back, should we think about some way, and I know this is kind of outrageous logistically, but some way to bring the younger kids back as soon as we can and not worry so much about the older kids who could do more independent work than the younger kids? And is that at all possible in any case scenario? Not that we need to have an answer for that right now, but those are the things on my mind right now.
I, I, I think right now we're looking at a, you know, a temporary closure. It's not, you know, throughout the month of January. I mean, my recommendation would be to, you know, obviously the, the week of the 4th to the 8th. And then we continue to meet with our medical advisory team. So that week, we would probably have a meeting on the 5th or the 6th. And we can kind of see the data, I think, for the past two weeks and continue to have those conversations and, you know, notify, you know, the families. Because as we go through a lot of this stuff, too, the, our high-needs student population, they will, you know, obviously still be coming in. The ones, the most needy of our students, they're getting a lot of those supports. So there's different aspects of a temporary close and with the understanding of being precautionary versus, as the mayor said, we're, we're shutting down the, the school system. So I don't think we're, we're looking at it as a full shutdown. There is going to be some students that will need to access the, the schools during that time. The teachers will be teaching from their classrooms, although they'll be remote. They'll be working out of the classrooms, very similar to what we've been utilizing, you know, on those Wednesdays. And, and this week, how it's, how it's looked. So it's not, you know what I mean? It, it's, it's precautionary, it's working with our medical team and making the decisions. But it's not a full, as the mayor said, we're not like shutting down the entire system. We are limiting access just to kind of let things settle and see where the data takes us. So I think that that's an important aspect of this too. It's not a, you know, full shutdown for the month of January. You know, it could be in the sense that each week as we're meeting, but we're, we really want to try to get back to our hybrid learning. I think from the teachers, the students, you know, for all of us, but we just want to make sure we're, we're doing it in a safe way.
I had a couple of very quick questions, maybe not so quick. And then I wanted to give Kathy Rikio an opportunity to sort of check in here because she's got the, you know, the most specific data in the schools. In the last week of November and the first week of December, the second fastest growing infection rate occurred among age zero to 19. And that seems to be a shift. I just was wondering if you could comment on that? If you had any thoughts? It just seems, you know, I, early on, we talked about how kids don't get infected and now they're getting infected at a very high rate compared to the rest of the population.
Are you asking me or our medical advisors?
Dr. Sue or Mr. Allard? Or you?
Yeah, I, I would say that that's accurate. And, you know, that zero to 19 does tend to be asymptomatic. There, there are some very small percentages who, who do get sick. So that's not 100% that, that are asymptomatic. But that is a very fast, and, and that's the challenge with this. And, you know, I, anecdotally, you know, I look at on Saturday, driving by March's Hill, a lot of great fun. My daughter was one of, among them masked. A lot of people are not masked. And, and that is an example of, I think, what we're going to be facing in the spring break, or excuse me, in this winter break, I wish we were in spring break, where that it will spread very, very fast. And it's the older populations, of course, that, that are more susceptible to the disease's full impact.
And I just had a question for, for Sean, and I don't know that you can answer this, but there must be a tipping point at, at some spot where we've got teachers who are out, teachers who are quarantined. We can't teach because we simply don't have enough bodies to do the teaching. Where are we relative to that point?
Well, as, as you recall, we had a case at the Bres where we had to quarantine the, the second grade. So we had the second grade teachers not coming in. So we went remote with second grade only. I know at the Knox Middle School, we had teachers on a team that was quarantining. And Principal Furlong, along with the teacher leaders, kind of made the coverage. So we didn't have to go remote for that team or that grade. So we've been, I think the more cases that are impacting the schools, you're going to see more and more faculty having to quarantine. So I think the decision for these three days right now paid off for us because we have the ability for the teachers to work remotely, the ones that are still being quarantined, along with the teachers that are in the buildings working remotely. So, I mean, that's the other aspect with the increase of cases. Not necessarily is it the teachers that are coming down with the, with COVID, but through close contacts, people being quarantined and staying home. So we've obviously the last couple of weeks, through my messaging, I think the community has recognized there's been more and more, not only the students, but more and more faculty members having to quarantine.
Okay. Um, I wanted to give, Brian, go ahead, Mr. Callahan.
You can finish.
No, I was, I wanted to give Kathy Rikio an opportunity to talk to us about what she's seeing.
Okay, yeah, Kathy, you can go now if you want. I'm wait.
Yep.
Okay, if I could have the screen, that would be awesome. I'd like to just share the data on the summary of the number of cases by week and actually groups of weeks, so people can kind of see the effect of what Dr. Sue was showing with the incident rate. What did that look like in our schools?
Yeah, you should be able to share your screen.
Okey dokey. I don't know why this doesn't, okay, hold on, excuse me. Okay, there we go. Right? There we go. Okay, here it is. So what Bruce asked me to do, and Lisa Furlong helped me get this done, is to summarize our cases. And this, if you can think, as we started school, we remember that our positive test rate was low, very low in the beginning. So this is the beginning, this is six weeks. This first box is when we started school until the end of October. And if you just kind of skimmed down, we had a total of six cases, you know, specifics, student close contacts. That was typically due to a sports team. And then three cases of staff, et cetera, and then staff close contacts to different cases. And then you go to the month of, then you go to three weeks, three and a half weeks of November. And we have roughly the same kind of numbers, but yet it's not the six weeks from before. And if you'll remember, that's when we were starting to climb up. And now we're kind of starting to get to the three and a half, 3.84 positive test rate range for three and a half weeks. And then we start to move and we start to follow week by week. So if you'll, here's the total for six weeks, six student cases, three staff, nine. Then we have seven for three weeks in November. Now we go for a week, we have five cases in a week and a staff case. And then another week, five and one. Again, here we are coming along. And then the last week here, we have 10. So what I did was trying to pull these all together here. And this is the summary of our cases to date. And you can see the jump right here after Thanksgiving. And I felt it, everybody in the buildings felt it. If, it, when you were asking the question about a tipping point, I kind of felt that tipping point. It was definitely at the time, roughly the December week of the 10th. That is when it seemed like the cases jumped. We were trying, the nurses were working many nights trying to contact trace, identify students and notify families so that they could quarantine and be safe and get tested. And then staff, when you have the increased cases, I know we had many staff members. When I, when we looked past a couple of months, we reviewed the case, the number of students quarantining in a week. And this doesn't just what's related to schools. This is what's related, I'll come out of this right now. So when, so when we looked at statistics from the Knox School, we looked at, we had weeks where 22 to 35 students were out because many, many times it's due to an exposure in school or due to an exposure at home, due to an exposure of a sports team, due to whatever situation arises. And the impact, you could feel that impact affecting. I, I would have to say that it's, it's, it's just this kind of constant stress that sits around you. And, and I want to commend our teachers and our administrators. Every morning they have to wake up and juggle balls and, and our district, I would have to tell you, people have worked very, very hard. We are dedicated to in-person education. I hope people realize that, because what other district has done, what we've done. But it has been very tough at the end, especially after Thanksgiving. And it is, I'm very grateful to have the medical advisors that we have and I'm very grateful to have our administrators. I'm so psyched at the mayor hooking us up with surveillance testing and, and reviewing those options for us. And what I'm hoping to do is I really hope to evaluate our surveillance testing options because I want to be able to test as many people as I can, meaning staff. If I could include some levels of students in there, that would be great. I don't know what our final options will be, you know, but I know that we'll, we'll be putting, we'll be trying as very hard to put in the best plan we can. Because surveillance testing will be very important for us to have eyes going forward. But it's also supplements, exactly supplements our current mitigation efforts that are in place. And it also relies on our, it, it's tough to make these, these changes in our daily lives. It's tough to make these changes in the way we want to celebrate things. But those changes will make the impact of reducing our cases. And so it's really going to rely on the community and what data we see in January, how we keep going forward.
Yeah, I got, my question, my guess is for Dr. Sue and Mr. Allard, or possibly Superintendent Gallagher. Back in the beginning of all this, we talked about what the closure or the all remote numbers are going to be with one of the 4% ceiling. But we never, ever talked about what is an opening number? And nobody could ever really give a, a clear answer on that. It was a, we'll wait and see type of thing. So if we went to remote for the two weeks after break, Dr. Sue, we're basing that on X data right now. So if we're presuming that you guys are recommending to go remote because of the data as it is today, at what point do we say, okay, we can go back into hybrid remote? What are the numbers then? Or is it going to be open-ended?
So I can comment on this with the caveat that this is me just thinking about this. But I certainly was not seeing this two-week, you know, remote as shifting to remote permanently. I was sort of seeing this as people are traveling around, there's a lot of disease coming. When, once people come back from their winter break and they're stationary, we have a little bit more perhaps control over this because we don't have the influx and out and, and as many people putting themselves in potentially risky scenarios and then not doing things like contact, quarantining or getting tested when they come back. So I was seeing this as a measure to sort of, you know, see how things are, get, get the student population a little bit under control and identify those cases, especially of people who've been traveling, so that we can prevent them from coming in the schools. Now, you know, in my opinion, let's be honest, we know that January is going to be a very difficult month for this, for this disease. But I think in, in the mind or in the discussions that we had, have had in the Wednesday meetings, I think the viewpoint on this was always from a standpoint of what can we do proactively in order to keep the schools open? So I, I know that doesn't answer your question of the parameters. I, I don't think I can say exactly the parameters. We had written some up initially. But, you know, I think one of the things we have to appreciate is like, for example, if even the parameters to close, I'm happy to say we actually were able, able to keep the schools open even longer than what we initially thought because our protocols were so good. So, you know, when I, I'm looking at this also now, if we're, we're careful and safe to, to close for a bit so we can stay open longer, I, I don't think we've necessarily had the discussions of exact parameters if we ended up going fully remote for a, a longer period of time.
Yeah, I would just echo that. I mean, when we saw the example based on the prior criteria by the state where the city went into the red, the, it wasn't an automatic recommendation because of that, you know, one set of guidelines. You know, there's a multitude of factors, I think, you know, for a lot of the discussion. It is, it is really that plus the fact that all projections through this period of Christmas and New Year's is going to see many, many more interactions amongst people in our communities, of Christmas and New Year's is going to see many, many more interactions amongst people in our communities, which will, will create by almost every model I've seen a higher level of infection rate throughout the Commonwealth and throughout these communities. You know, those had gone into sort of the recommendation to, to go remote. I think that echoing Dr. Sue, you know, we want, we want the best conditions to get back in to in-person learning. And that's a goal, always having that in mind. I have seen more recent models coming out of UMass that says by the third week of January, the incident rates, infection rates will flatten. It'll flatten at that higher level, but they'll start to flatten. Time will tell if that's true or not. But again, there, there is some hope on the horizon. And I think it's not just one thing, but a whole compilation of factors that go into these decisions.
Excellent. I have one more quick question for the doctor. I was in a meeting earlier with Joint Ed, or whatever we call Joint Ed nowadays, Education Committee. And I believe Counselor Khan mentioned the vaccine. Is it not for people below 16, age 16? Is that the case?
Yeah, so, so both Moderna and Pfizer, all their clinical trials were done in 16 and older. And so right now the data and the efficacy for those under 16 is not, there's not enough data on it. Now, what I expect is, I think what they did was they particularly chose the target population to get the vaccine out as fast as possible. And so by doing that, you know, you think when you're, when you're below puberty, there's all sorts of issues with determining optimal dose and everything because people aren't full grown, et cetera. So I think really the efficacy is more things like identifying optimized dose and this and that. My sense is what's going to happen now that those have the emergency approval is that Moderna is going to be going through and saying to Pfizer and sort of refining that for kids, and they'll probably then do an expedited vaccine for them too. And, and when I looked at the data, there is absolutely no reason to think that this is not going to be incredibly efficacious with kids. I mean, if you've looked at clinical trial data before, you'd never see anything that looks as good as what we saw.
I definitely have not.
Well, Brian, to go back to something that you said earlier, I, I do think that, that this is a school committee decision. And even if it wasn't a school committee decision, I wouldn't want Sean to walk the plank on this one. I would want the community to know he's got the full support of the school committee or whatever support he's getting on the school committee. And I think that that does require a vote. So I, you know, we can continue the discussion. I would entertain a motion that we go remote for the first two weeks after the holiday with the understanding that the medical advisory team is going to meet during that first week and evaluate when we think we can, we can reopen, that, that the goal is reopening. Do we have a motion?
I'm moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. Discussion.
I mean, I would just say, I don't think it's a voting situation as well. I would be happy to take a vote in support of Sean. I just think we're not voting on a plan. It wasn't in our packet. I just, I don't feel comfortable taking a vote. I absolutely support Dr. Sue and Mr. Allen's information that they sent to us tonight. I think it's a smart move. I think what really concerns me is the contract tracing piece. I think if we can't be doing that, I think it really throws all our protocols out of whack and it makes it very hard to stay in school safely. So if that's the direction we go, I think that's great. I would say though, if we, if we do go this route, I would just say, let's, let's have a date, whether it be the 19th, which is a Tuesday because of Martin Luther King, is on Monday, the 18th. Let's give people some hope and some optimism that we're going to get back in school. Let's hopefully have that be the carrot to get us to do what we need to do in the community to be safe and bring down our numbers. Like I said, my three kids who are in school right now, their favorite days of the week right now are Thursday and Friday because they're Cohort B, they, they love when they get to go to school. And as long as we can get the teachers and students in school safely, I think that that's what we've got to, we've got to have as our goal, so.
I guess I'd go either way, but I was going to ask Superintendent Gallagher if, if that is his plan. So if we were to ask you what your recommendation is, because I think I agree with Mr. Riordan that I don't, that I think I'd rather vote in favor of supporting your recommendation than vote to impose a school committee recommendation on you.
I mean, I think our medical team, as we said, you know, we trust them. Dr. Sue and Mike Allen and Kathy Ricchio. And I think Dr. Sue and Mike Gallid, they, they, you know, they're, they're in the trenches in the sense of fighting this virus and all different levels. And I think they have a lot of insight. And if they're encouraged just to temporarily close for those two weeks remotely, then you know, that's what we'll do. But you know, as I was saying, as part of that remote plan, teachers come into the building. There are going to be some students in programming that are most at-risk students will be coming in and we'll work all those details out. But I would be in support of our medical advisory team's recommendation.
So is your recommendation then that we go to full remote schools except for high-needs populations until Tuesday, the 18th?
Correct.
At which point, at which point, as of now, we're planning on restarting the hybrid program?
Right. We want to come back in the hybrid on the 18th.
Mr. Menon, could we, if we were to vote in favor of supporting that recommendation, do we need to change the motion? Because that just sounds a lot more concrete.
Sure. I would, if, who did the second? We can do.
I'll second what Dave just said.
So, you want to frame the motion?
Yeah, I would just, I would like to make a motion that we vote to support Superintendent Gallagher's plan to close, to go to remote education for everybody except high-needs populations and to restart our hybrid program on January 18th, the Tuesday after Martin Luther King Day.
Second.
It, it's just 19th for the, for the minutes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, the 19th?
19th, yeah, it's a Tuesday. Can I just add too, I mean, Sean, you've been great, Superintendent Gallagher, you've been great about communicating with the community. I would just say during those two weeks, maybe after your meetings, because we're not in those meetings, we're not involved in those meetings with your, with your advisors at all, that maybe just updating the, the community about what you're hearing in those meetings would be, would be beneficial and kind of keep everybody abreast of what's going on.
Absolutely.
Because I will say, just taking a vote, it is difficult because we're not in those meetings. We're hearing this information for the first time, just like everybody else. So I do think, you know, communication over those two weeks would be great. Thank you.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Here are none. All those in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We are unanimous. Dr. Sue and Mr. Allen, thank you very much. Kathy.
Thanks, guys.
Well, the work that you're doing.
Thank you very much. Have a nice holiday.
Yeah, stay safe.
Thanks.
The next item is Remote Learning Academy updated overview from Sean Gallagher.
Great. There was just some correspondence regarding the Remote Academy. And let me, and we did reach out to that family that corresponded with school committee. And we resolved their individual issues, but that also just prompted information on the Remote Academy. So I'll just go through just some key components and some numbers. And then we can take some questions afterwards if that works for the school committee. So at this time, in kindergarten, we have 18 students that are in the Full Remote Academy. We have 11 students in first grade, 10 second grade students, 19 third grade students, and 13 fourth grade students. In fifth grade, we have 13 fifth graders. We have 14 sixth graders, 17 seventh graders, and 27 eighth graders for a total of 140 students from K to 8. And as you recall, when we gave the overview, we have two teams. We have an elementary team, K to 5, and our middle school team, 6 to 8. Full team of Newburyport teachers that are working with the students on a daily basis. The trimester dates, the first trimester date was September 16th to December 11th. Our second trimester date is 12/14, December 14th to March 19th. And then the third trimester date is March 22nd to June 16th. And towards the beginning of signups for trimester two, registration opened on November 3rd. And then that occurred throughout the month of November. And ADRAP area was open for the 17 days from the 3rd to the 20th. That gave us time to do the planning as some students left the academy and some more students were added. So we had four moved into the hybrid and 10 were added. The middle school students dropped, none of them dropped, and they added 11. There was multiple parent communication on the enrollment throughout the second semester. And then there were some questions on a waiting list. There is, there is no waiting list. People registered prior to 11/20. So one factor is if there's a health change in, in families and they reach out to the principals or central office, we do accommodate for that, for those students. There was an open house parent conferences. They're following the same schedule where the academy starts at eight and ends at three. And there's variations at both levels and the student learning time online versus offline. But the teachers have a full day. And I'll tell you, it's, it's built as a school within the school. So there's been, the teachers in the Remote Academy from the K to 8 have been phenomenal. Lisa Alexander and Liz Kinsley, who are heading that up and organizing that, have done a, have done a great job. Very similar assessment data that we utilize in the hybrid model. They're also utilizing in the Remote Academy. Myu, Eureka Math, Bibble, Stath, 360, all of those similar programs that you know. And the pacing is aligned, roughly aligned with the hybrid classes that they're on a daily level. So that's what we really liked about this model is having Newburyport teachers teaching. So we're not sending kids online like some other districts where they're using Gradpoint and it's just an online version of remote learning. These are Newburyport teachers, teaching Newburyport students and also working, although their Remote Academy staff are also still collaborate and work with the faculty here. So that's kind of just a basic overview of the Remote Academy. And, and you know, that's the, the big piece was the commitment to the full remote or a commitment to the hybrid learning. So that's kind of where we're at with the quick update on the Remote Academy. Take her on mute, Bruce.
No, I was, I was just being very quiet. Did anybody have any questions for Sean at the Academy? Great, okay. We have several policies that have first reading. I'll turn this over to Policy Committee and Dave.
Okay. Let me find where we're starting. There we go. I think we're going to start on policy KHA fundraising in Newburyport schools. I first want to say thank you to everybody involved all year. We've been working on this since February now, March. And I think we came to a really good place. So the way they were in the, in your packet, they're a little backwards. If you look at page 15, that's the original policy. Pages 13 and 14 is, it's a renaming of the policy from public gifts to the schools to fundraising in Newburyport schools. It is, the, the first couple paragraphs there are the same as the policy held because it's just some introductory information. The legal team we spoke to wanted to keep the two bullet points about no direct solicitation and no general or class distribution. And then starting with the all requests to hold fundraisers, that's where we've been writing. A huge piece to the success of this, because Sean has been putting this in place with the school leadership, has been a form that the district created to use consistently across all schools. And from what I hear, that's been a success with the principals. The principal's been really happy to have some consistency in that. And I mean, I don't need to read all of these documents word for word. Hopefully you guys have gone through them. But it talks about what the form's going to ask. The next section talks about some things that the principals are going to consider. And it also talks about people presenting their fundraising goals to the superintendent, who would then bring it to the finance subcommittee at the beginning of August and the beginning of January. So twice a year, we can look at, kind of have an overview as to where some fundraising is going to be happening. And then there's a clause towards the bottom that says the superintendent has discretion to allow additional standard approval for agreements with longer-term organizations, we call them, like the NEF, the Athletic Boosters, the PTOs. And also if something pops up, like if, you know, the Model UN needs to go to states and they want to raise some money, we didn't want to hamstring anybody. It just wanted to make sure that that gets approval from the superintendent. The final thing we put in there is that any repeat fundraising, so things that continually get asked for year in, year out, should be considered for future budget items, which is something that the finance committee could do. They can keep an eye on that and say, well, wait a second, every year we seem to be fundraising for X. Let's make sure we put that as a budget item from now on. We want to talk about these one at a time, I assume? So I'll open the floor for any questions.
Does anybody have any questions on this policy? Mayor Holliday?
First of all, I'd like to thank you. I know that we, you know, this came up after, you know, the fundraising issues that arose at Brezner Hand. And I thank your committee for, you know, I think pretty solid work on this. And I appreciate all the, the work that has gone into here, gone into this. Would we normally attach the application to the policy so that it's clear that that's the policy to be included?
The form itself, you mean?
Yeah, the form itself. I mean, just so that there's no question about it. Things have a way of disappearing and old ones appear and disappear. And I just, it would be, I think, clean, if it was, could be attached to this. Where you make reference to it, you could just say, see attached, see attached form, and then date the form so that everyone knows it's the most current one. Just a suggestion.
Good. We, we had talked about that at one point and said that there really aren't, there's nothing else like that in the policy book, like a form that administrators usually do. But we could do it for this one without really having to set a precedent, I think.
I think so too.
So Sean, could we include that for the second read?
Yep.
Great.
And the only other thing that I ask is if you, David, if you wouldn't mind going through this with a, looking at it from, you know, just a grammatical framework, because some, these are phrases, some have punctuation, some don't. Some have question marks, some don't. It's really minor. But you know, there's just places where, you know, the phrases shouldn't have periods. If there's questions in their full sentences, some have question marks, some don't, just for consistency. But overall, I think the content. But overall, I think the content was pretty solid. Thank you. Good, nice work up here, committee.
Thank you. Good. Sheila, are you volunteering to do that for us?
I am, I used to be.
Sheila, that work is all yours.
All right.
This former English teacher gladly hands that over to you for the second read.
Thank you, Sheila.
Sure.
All right. I would like to make a motion to approve the fundraising in Newburyport Public Schools revised policy under Section K, Community Relations, file number KHA. Does that cover everything?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you.
Next meeting.
Next, we're going to talk about, I think it's on pages that, file KCD, Public Gifts to the Schools. For this, we really clarified two things. Number one was saying that anything over $5,000 should be brought to the school committee. Really just to, and if it's under that, it can be done given at the discretion of the And then we tried to define a word that was in the previous policy where it says extensive, talking about advertising, that no extensive advertising or promotion may be involved in any donation to the schools without school committee approval. That's prior, that's prior language. And so we just put a clarification of the word extensive in that it would mean something that community members can be exposed to both consistently and prominently.
Any questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
The intention is that the school committee would need to approve, I go back to the gym floor at the high school with the logo, I think it has logo of the bank because they paid for a lot of it. It leaves open the option that the school committee can accept that?
Correct.
Okay.
It says it won't be without school committee approval.
Great, okay, that's fine. And then I had, I had one more question and I'd like to hear just an explanation. You ran these by the attorney? I know that you had a conversation. In the last, the last, next to last paragraph before the sentence, gifts will automatically become the property of the school system. Any gift or cash, whether or not intended by the donor for a specific purpose, will be accepted by the school committee, handled as a separate account and expended at the discretion of the committee. I'm a big believer in ambiguity in policies, but that, I would love to have, to hear that, what the attorney had to say about, you know, and again, to me, that says that regardless of whatever they're giving us money for, we can spend it the way we want to spend it. And I don't think that was the intention. Or maybe it was, but that's how it feels to me.
I'll be honest with you, that is not our language. So that language came from MASK. And I think the lawyer recognized that and he didn't really have much to say about it. Like, he and I didn't spend much time fine-toothing it as so much as he brought up a couple points that he wanted to clarify throughout all three or four of the policies I brought to him.
Yeah.
I can only imagine that if somebody says, you know, I want to donate, I'm thinking about like a construction loan and somebody says, I want to donate money to build the gym floor, that the school committee through the finance department can say, okay, well we're going to allocate monies as they come along at our discretion. And that the person wouldn't necessarily have design input so much as the school, you know, they could give us something towards, you know, towards a goal, but it wouldn't be as specific or as measured. And I think the expended at the discretion means actually spent. So like when the school committee needs the money, they can dole it out through finance committee, I guess that would, that's how that would happen.
You know, my concern again is, I want to be as specific as we can about this because restricted funds are, you know, I've, we've always treated them as restricted and spent on what they're restricted for. If we're giving ourselves the leeway to not, or giving ourselves the appearance of the leeway, I would be a little concerned about that. So I just, I just raised that because, you know, the language, that's what the language says to me. And I wasn't looking to do a narrow reading of it, I was looking to do.
No, it's okay.
Mayor Holliday.
I have to agree with Bruce. I, that jumped out at me. So we currently have a potential son of a school teacher who has passed, who lives in California that I have been in contact with. And he's interested in doing some kind of donation to the school and Sean and I are having a conversation with him. So let's just take a hypothetical. So let's suppose that he decides to give the schools $50,000. Now this says that we can expend it at the discretion of the committee. So what if we decide that, well, you know, we appreciate the gift from Mr. Smith, but you know, we are having a budget shortfall in X. So at the discretion of the school committee, we're going to spend it on this instead. That's what that says to me in terms of reading it, you know, in terms of the plain language. And I have a real problem with that. I think it's going to chill donors if they see this is our policy, that we can change whatever their intent is at the whim of the school committee. And I don't believe that's your intent, but that's the way it reads.
So like I said, that's always been the language here. That's not new language and I don't think we wrote that. I have no problems clarifying it.
Please.
Because.
Yeah, that was there. So yeah, if we want to change it, let's change it. But that was the language that was there, that's not new.
So, you know, the word expended could be, expended at the discretion could mean that we could spend it on anything we want or that we could write the checks whenever the project requires it. Right? I think, I think that was probably the intention of it, although I don't really know.
Could we change it to approved?
Expended at the discretion of the committee.
No, handled at a separate account and approved by the school committee. Then it leaves it a little more flexible. You still have some discretion, but I would like to think that if someone donates money to the schools, that we would honor their intent.
Go ahead, Sheila.
That, I agree with what the mayor just said. Also, I recommend we could strike that, that, we could end this sentence at handled as a separate account, period, and just strike and expended at the discretion of the committee as provided by law. Strike that and read it as ending after separate account because the school committee still votes on it.
I think that's a good solution.
So do I.
That's fine.
I agree with you guys. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I agree with all that about, you know, you don't want the person to give it and then we take it and spend it on X. But the line, if this is from MASK and the lawyer looked at it and it says, you know, handled as a separate account and expended at the direction of committee as provided by law, am I presuming correctly that there's a law that says that? Can we supersede that if that's the case?
We're not superseding it. We're, you know, if there's a law that we have to follow, we're still going to be following the law. I don't think we have to put it in the, in the policy that we're going to follow the law.
No, I'm sorry. My, what I mean is, the part where it says expended at the discretion of the committee as provided by law. I'm not a lawyer, but it seems like it's saying, hey, the law says we have the right to expend it at our discretion.
I think it's talking about how the finance laws work and that you will expend finances based on fiscal laws related to school spending is the way I interpreted that piece. I could be wrong, but I like the idea of Sheila saying that we just end it after school committee.
Okay.
Is this just a poorly constructed sentence? When they say as provided by law, could they be referring to handled as a separate account? Is it supposed to be in a separate account? And should we just strike and expended at the discretion of the committee? So it reads handled as a separate account as provided by law?
Sure.
Yep.
That makes sense.
Sean, technical question here. Since you guys put the document together and sent them to me as the PDF, could you take notes to give to Joanne?
Yeah.
Because I don't have, I don't have an editable copy on which I could take notes.
Okay.
So I move to accept the public gifts to the school revised policy as amended for a first reading.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I said one, one thing if you guys don't mind. We don't want to do this forever, but, so I just looked up the MGL about that. It says, it's more specific. It says, "Any amount so received by a school committee of a city or town shall be deposited with the treasure of such city or town and held as a separate account and expended by said school committee without further appropriation notwithstanding the provisions of Section 53 of Chapter 44. Any amount so received by a regional district doesn't count for us, blah, blah, blah." So the language is somewhat different and also more specific than what we have in there. So.
Not really, Brian, because it really just, no, because I think it's just talking about that money that gives to the school, whether it be a grant or a gift or whatever, you know, it has to be, you know, organized or controlled by the treasurer's office and that's what happens anyway.
Okay.
So.
All right.
But thanks for looking it up.
Further discussion? Brian, you have a well-formed copy of the, of the MGL there, I think.
The internet told me.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. The last one is about crowdfunding. And the two things we added to this, there's one clause there that says it's important to note that any crowdfunding efforts must be for something that benefits entire classes or groups of students, not the teacher, if it's going to avoid becoming a conflict of interest. So like teachers shouldn't, the example I've always been given is teachers shouldn't be crowdfunding for a new desk chair. Because if it's just to benefit the teacher, then it can become part of a conflict of interest if it's over $50. And then the lawyer gave us the sentence at the bottom that defines what crowdfunding
Motion to approve the crowdfunding revised policy, Section G, Personnel Policy, file GBEBD.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
This is first reading.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Dave, you also have the next item on the agenda, the response letter from Governor Baker or to Governor Baker.
So I don't know if you guys got a chance to read the letter that MASK and MASP collectively wrote. I know I took notice and I know I wasn't the only one on this committee and not the only one statewide to take note towards the end of their letter when they called out the governor for not calling out the teachers' unions. And I just, I didn't think there was any reason to do that. I thought it was more divisive than useful. And then they go on to list a couple of isolated incidents that I also don't think it's appropriate to do at a statewide level. And so I drafted the response that I tried to get to mention just that. The letter that I sent to you guys, I don't think it was in our packet, but I think you guys all have a copy of it. Yes?
You know what? I don't. You sent it in an email, I can look right now.
I did send it an email.
Yeah, I did read the, I did read it, so.
So yeah, it did not make it into the packet, but it is. So I don't know if we can vote on it tonight if enough of us have seen it or if we don't, if we want to hold off, but.
I would say hold off. Let's, let's get everybody to read it and put their input in.
Yeah, I would say hold on, just because it didn't make it in the packet. That makes sense.
Next.
Superintendent's report. Superintendent Gallagher.
All right. Did you, on the agenda, Mr. Menon, it does discussion in the school committee.
Oh, sorry about that, sorry about that, yes. I also realized partway through the medical part that we never, we didn't finish the consent agenda, we didn't do the minutes, so.
Don't have any minutes.
Well, I think there weren't any in the packet?
No.
I think there was one set.
November 2nd.
There was one set.
November 2nd.
Okay.
We'll finish that at the end.
It's on page four, if you're looking for that.
Yeah. As far as the retreat goes, I've been, people have been sending me suggestions. One of the things that I would like to do is finally have Dorothy Presser from MASK come in and have a conversation with us about roles. We could fold into that conversation. Dave's request that we look at the chair and vice chair positions, it seems to make, to me to make a lot of sense. She is only available on January 13th. That is when she is available in the evening to participate in our retreat. So that would require us to change the date of our retreat and move it off of the school committee meeting day, actually. Also on the list would be having Michelle just go over legal issues with us. I have a very, very tentative draft of the code of ethics. I used the information that I got from Brian, which actually wasn't a code of ethics, but it was, it was protocols and principles. And I looked at a couple of other school districts and have combined it into one document. And I had agreed to do that and send that out to everybody before the retreat. So I will probably have a finished copy of that within the next couple of days. Were there other things that you want to put on the agenda for the retreat?
I just want to say that it sounds to me like we're planning on spending a lot of time talking about things that are a result of claims that were found invalid.
We were going to have a meeting with Dorothy Presser, it was postponed twice, it was a year after we originally set the meeting with her. So it's an opportunity to do it now, we're all there, and it seems, it makes sense at the beginning of the year to have her do it. If you disagree, that's fine, but she's available.
Is this where we set our goals for the year?
No.
On our agenda? No, it's not. Okay.
No, but it could be when we talk about whether or not we're paying attention to the goals that we've already written and agreed upon for this year.
Put it on the agenda, that's fine, to have that conversation.
I wouldn't mind revisiting, you know, the concept of working meetings. And, you know, are we going to try to have some of those this year, whether they're topic-based or just more open dialogue meetings on some issues?
Any other topics? Are people available on the 13th when Dorothy Presser is?
Yes. I'll get back to you on that.
Yeah, she had really limited availability in the month.
It would be in the evening of the 13th, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So then we have our joint, joint meeting on the 12th and then we meet for our retreat on the 13th.
Yeah.
And so we'd keep our, we'd keep our regular meeting on the 4th.
Right.
And would that be the meeting that we'd vote on, on chair, vice chair, or would we save that?
It's totally up to you. Usually it's the first meeting of the year.
Yeah, all right, that's why I was asking. Okay.
And then are we going to meet again on the 19th?
Yeah. I would assume it's a regularly scheduled meeting.
Just a lot of meetings.
All right, I will put together a draft of the agenda and circulate it. Now it's time for the superintendent's report.
All right. So I was just really. So I was just really going to give just a quick update. We've already talked about some of the commissioners' call. But as we know, with the stimulus package being passed, that's, I think, gonna, we'll see how the money gets trickled down to the school systems and/or the cities and towns, but we know that President-elect Biden, his, one of his goals for his first hundred days taking office is to get schools back in person, or full in person. And so we would anticipate some of that funding would probably go to vaccinations as part of that Phase Two, which, you know, for educators, and the Commonwealth, the commissioner said, they're looking at the end of February and in April, for the vaccinations to come out to the schools and school personnel. So we'll see how that plays out, we'll get more details. The MCAS testing, as we all know, was canceled, or not canceled, has been postponed. And also part of President-elect Biden's cabinet and the talk is, there may be relief on standardized testing throughout the country. So we'll see on that. But right now, grade 11 was postponed till the spring. Access testing for our Ls, that will continue, but the window will be all the way to the end of school, working with our Ls for that testing. And then the other piece that they're looking at for assistance is high school seniors towards the end of this school year, in the month of May and June, if they're in good standing. Some districts are looking at having high school seniors do internships within the elementary schools, which may assist with some staffing shortages, if, you know, people are out sick. So those are some of the, the, the pieces that we talked about for the superintendents. And then the new criteria is student learning time. So they're looking at synchronous and asynchronous throughout the Commonwealth. So all districts had to submit their plans, and I think through the hard work of our principals and Assistant Superintendent Beck, and planning with teacher leaders, I think we're in good standing for our student learning time. So that was also submitted. So that was from the commissioner. I just wanted to thank the other piece of, and only dealing with COVID and the virus, we also, I think have taken great steps as a community, a school community, but also community at large, working with DE, DEI Alliance, the Diversity Equity Inclusion Alliance at the city side, working with the Human Rights Commission, and then also Michael Eitman on the school side. So really looking at dealing with racism, bias, prejudice, discrimination, I think at all three levels, has been really inspiring, you know? And I think Newburyport is a special place that we see problems, we rally together, and we deal with problems and, and racism and bias going on, not only at the, the national level, but really a focus in Newburyport, and us coming together, I think, has been, it's just been really powerful. And I'm, and I'm thankful that we're in this together, and those three organizations, along with other organizations, has been really uplifting the past two months, as we've been meeting and, and developing plans on, on how we're going to deal with this as a community. So that's my superintendent's report for tonight.
Sean, quick question. You and I had spoken once about bringing him to the school committee meet, retreat in January.
Yes.
Recognizing that, at least I think a lot of the issues we've been dealing with are internal cultural issues, that he might be able to talk to us about?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's still possible, but, or at another meeting, I don't know, I, I don't know, but depends on how busy, I don't know, Mr. Menon, what the.
I think we'll be there till two in the morning, if we try and put all this stuff in here, knowing the way we discuss and debate and talk about things, you know, already bringing Dorothy, bringing in, you know, legal, bringing in, you know, some of these other topics. I think we should bring Michael in for another, maybe a February meeting.
Absolutely. We have two other meetings, school committee meetings in the month. He could come in at one of those meetings.
Well, it depends on his schedule, but yes, I, I would suggest that he not come the night of the retreat.
I would, okay. I personally think that the discussion he's going to have with this is much more retreat-based, whereas having a lawyer and somebody from mask come to talk about, you know, legal policies and ethics is more of a public-facing discussion. But that's, I guess that's for you guys to talk about.
Well, maybe Bruce, you could look at the agenda and see how, you know, long it looks like it's going to be, and if we can structure it so that Michael is, he's available, have him come in. But I, I would like to have him for the full time.
So would I. I'm saying, I think, I think he's, he's more what I have envisioned for a retreat than, than the other pieces, but.
Could the other, he had our public meetings, as he suggested?
I would have to ask Dorothy about that. Yeah, I, I'll ask her.
Okay.
That was well.
I mean, it'd be a good idea just to get some, some dates from Michael anyways, because he might not be available, so it might all be.
Correct.
Removed, so.
Okay.
Okay. Subcommittee reports. Sean, you.
Yep, so Joint Ed, Education Subcommittee met today. We had a good discussion, we had our representative from Whittier come, because the counselors had not met him before. So that was a good conversation, and hearing a little, you know, it was nice getting a little perspective on how Whittier has been weathering this pandemic. We had a brief discussion of some questions around still the acts of 1987. So that's just still, is more of an open discussion, trying to answer some questions that counselors and school committee members had. And finally, we heard from Sean a little bit more about strategic plan and, and kind of timeline and things going forward there. I think that was, I think that was everything. It was good, good discussion.
I don't believe finance has met, policy delivered a report tonight, and superintendent's evaluation is on the back burner for a couple of months. Just a couple of months.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Holidays.
Happy holidays.
Everybody.
Be safe, don't go anywhere.